All right, I'd like to start the meeting. Would everybody please rise? My allegiance to the flag. Please be seated. Welcome everyone. Township of Old Bridge zoning board of adjustment meeting, August 28, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. At least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, mailing such announcements to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Vice Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo? Absent. Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Yeah.
Ms. Testaverde? Absent. Mr. Singh? Absent. Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. And she's here, too. Board members, before I start with the minutes, I just want to announce that this is, meeting is being televised on CATV live on Channel 15 of cable station here in the township. Also, it's simultaneously being sent out live on YouTube. If you ever need to look back at a meeting, you can find that on YouTube under Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment. The meeting is not going to, we normally break at 10 o'clock. I have no concept of it lasting that long tonight. These are fairly simple issues. I'll address all of you before we start the applications, but we have some other housekeeping issues to take care of right now. Board members' minutes, it would be of August 7, 2023 meeting. Hopefully, they've been distributed and everyone has had a chance to review them. Absent any comments or suggestions of deletions or additions, I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is resolutions. We have two this evening. I'll call them in order 54-2024Z. It's Phoenix Realty Developers. That was major preliminary and final site plan C and D variance. Counselor?
Thank you. Board members, this is the application that had the split zone. The front area was industrial, the commercial, the back area was environmental. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. I'll be doing this all night. I apologize. Split zone, property is in two different zones. The applicant requested, generally speaking, permission to park buses, school buses, in the back zone. All work, all improvements, all repairs, all oil changes, everything else will be done inside the warehouse. There were no, as I recall, there were no comments from any of the joining property owners.
Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone move for adoption, please.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Second, please. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 15-2024Z Salvatore Trinseri. It's a C variance.
This is, thank you. It's an amended resolution that you approved about a year ago. The resolution, excuse me, the application was approved in July of '24. The resolution was memorialized in August. The resolution at that time contained a condition of approval that the proposed development would be completed within one year. So it would be completed by this month. The applicant only recently came in for the permits and has requested a one-year extension of that prior approval so that it should be completed within one year of when he obtains his building permit, which I think he just received. There's been no change in the zoning. There's been no change in the neighborhood. Everything's still the same. At the request of the zoning officer, we've prepared this, actually, of the property owner, we've prepared this amended resolution, giving him another year.
Okay, with absolutely no changes, correct?
That's correct. And except for the fact that I misspelled the avenue at the caption of the resolution. I missed an eye. I'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dasty. Board members, you understand that it's an extension of one year for the prior approval? Anyone have any questions? Someone want to move for adoption?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrews, move it. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. That comes as swearing into professionals. Before I ask Mr. Dasty to do that, I'll introduce Mr. Dasty for you who might be sitting here on the court room, knowing or not know. Seated to my right, your left, as you view the dais, is our board attorney. It's Jerry Dasty, who's been with us all this year, and we take counsel from him. The other board members, as you look, are volunteers, except for Mr. Hollahan, who's a township employee, and he is the zoning officer. The rest of us are volunteer members of this board that either go annually or semi-annually and renewed by council. So having said that, I'm going to ask now the council that the attorney swear in or professional. Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Now, there are four applications tonight. One of them's going to be carried. What I want to explain to you as you're sitting here, because it's going to apply to each and every one of you regardless of what you're doing in your own homes. What you're seeking are C variances, which are normally homeowner issues, and this is more of a homeowner night versus a commercial entity that might come in and want to build something rather large. These are usually additions to your property or maybe pools, et cetera. But everything applies to all of you. When you come up to testify, the first thing that's going to happen is the board attorney's going to put you under oath, because your testimony is under oath. After that, we're going to ask you to tell us the who, what, why, and where for, basically. Tell us what you're doing, why you're doing it, how you're doing it, why you're here, basically, in front of us. The board members may have some questions for you. We may have, you may have questions for us. If there's any exhibits that you bring, you're going to have to show them to our vice secretary, and the attorney will make sure that they can be visible to the board members. Usually, they're photographs. We have surveys of your home already, so we know that. But that's the way it goes. After each application, I have to open up what's called a public portion. Now, I don't see many visitors in here this evening to view the meeting, other than probably the applicants. Nonetheless, I have to offer the public to make comment. They have to be here in the courtroom. So I'll open up a public portion after each one. Once that's done, I'm going to ask you if you have any final comments. Then I'm going to ask you if you want the board to take a vote. If you feel for some reason that you really haven't proved what you need to prove, and maybe there's a lot of questions by the board, you may want to ask for a continuance in order to supplement that testimony. Maybe something's not going right for you that you think you might need some more time to adjust. You'll be entitled to that. The board would probably graciously grant you that. We would take a vote on it, but normally, we would graciously allow you to have a continuance if you don't feel it's going to. You don't have to take a vote, is that's what I'm saying tonight. But if you feel like you're all set, we'll take a vote. We'll let you know whether you're approved or not. So that'll apply to each and every one of you as we take you. We're going to take you in the order that it's on schedule. So I'm going to call the first one up. That's 20-25Z, 2025Z, Sandip Romeo. That's R6 Zone. This is Block 15513, Lot 566. Physical location's 34 Buttonwood Drive, Old Bridge. This is regarding a deck. The applicant proposes the removal of an existing 16-by-24 deck and the construction of a new 16-by-34-by-six-foot average height deck, 10-foot, 8-inch from the side yard property line, where 15 minimum is required. Sir, you are? The lady sitting next to you?
My wife.
Okay, her name is? Okay. Will she be testifying as well? I think it'd be best if the board attorney puts you both under oath. That way, you can both testify.
Please, both of you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? As you begin to testify, just give your full name and spell your last for me, so I have it correct. And you want to, you may not be tuned in there.
Thank you. They're directional, so just speak right into them. Sir, your turn. You can start by telling us what you're doing and why.
We are building a deck in our backyard, because the backyard is like a sloppy. And during the rainy, like, it's not like good for kids and everything. And my father has like a brain surgery and have a balance issue. So just to enjoy the backyard, we are putting a deck.
So the deck is going to get wider, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to tell us? Do you have any pictures you want to show us? Any, nothing you want to show us at this point?
No, we don't have the picture.
Does your wife want to say anything at this point?
No, it's okay. That's all.
I'm going to ask our professional why you're here. Mr. Hollahan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the applicant is here tonight seeking one single C variance. The side yard setback of the deck is proposed 10.8 feet from the side yard property line, where 15-foot minimum is required. As the board members know, this is the R6 Zone, so the setback is dependent on the height of the deck or the average elevation of the deck. So with the average elevation being a six-foot-high deck, that setback is 15 feet from all property lines, both side yard and rear. So the applicant is, you know, roughly 4.2 feet deficient on that one side yard to the right side, and that is the only variance required for this application.
If I'm correct, the way I look at the survey, it actually lines up with the edge of the house, right?
About yes. I believe it does, it lines up with the edge of the house, yes. So it won't be any closer to that southerly property line than the house is.
Right. That's what I wanted to make sure. It's not going beyond that, but it's going to come up to.
Correct. Yes.
Presently, it's short of that.
Correct. Yes. And I believe the existing deck has been removed at this point, and you guys are just waiting on construction permits and approval from this board to construct. Okay. Yeah, so the existing deck has been completely demolished at this point. So right now, there is no deck in the backyard.
There's no plans to enclose the deck or to make another room out of the deck.
No, not at all.
Let me see if the board members have any questions. I'm going to start on my left-hand side. Going right up. Mr. Scogno?
Sir, why didn't you make it smaller? Why did you go out all that distance?
So kids can enjoy play on the deck.
What was the reason?
Kids can play on the deck.
Kids can play on the deck?
Because downstairs, like, too, slope is really steep.
Oh, the slope is steep?
So my son has a hamstring issue, also. I don't want him to go down and, you know, he has multiple time hamstring strains also. So that's the reason we made it a little bit wider.
Okay, thank you.
They can play, you know, on the backyard, like, ball and stuff on the deck.
Sir, how far out does the slope begin from your deck?
From the, maybe on the high.
At the end, the deck is 16, 16 feet out, right?
Yeah.
How far beyond that does the slope, does it constantly go downhill?
So these way?
No, it's on the sideways.
Goes sideways?
Yeah.
Mr. Scogno, anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Stoner, anything? Vice Chair?
Nope.
No questions, counselor?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else you want to tell us? So there's not going to be any enclosure. You're not putting any plumbing, electric out? Just basically the same deck that you had, except newer and larger?
Yep. That's all.
All right. I'm going to ask the public if anybody has anything to say about it. This matter is 20-2025Z. The physical location's 34 Buttonwood Drive here in Old Bridge for a new deck, a little larger than the old deck. And because it is 4-foot, 2, I guess it's, 15 is required, and this is a 10?
10 and a half.
10 and a half.
Yeah, 10.8.
It's a 4-foot, .2 difference. Anyone here in the courtroom want to be heard in this matter? Please raise your hand or stand now. No one has? I'm going to close the public portion. Any final comments? You wish the board to take a vote?
Yes.
This would be for hardship on the slope?
Oh, yeah. Hardship on the slope. Yes, that's correct. And I think it's important to emphasize that it won't be any larger so-called side yard setback deviation than the house is now. Nothing new here.
All right. Anyone in favor of moving this? Steve Arons?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Second, it's Stoner?
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews? I'm sorry. Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I'm glad to see you're improving your facility there, the deck for your children. Wish you the best luck. Make sure you comply with all the permit requirements.
Yep, we already applied both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both of you for appearing. Our next matter is 24-2025Z. This is Jitin Gupta, R5 Medium Residential. This is Block 7125, Lot 16. Physical location's 32 Gazania Drive. This is C variance, seeking C variance. The applicant proposes the installation of a six-foot vinyl fence, of which a portion would be in the front yard, where a maximum of four-foot open fence is permitted. Mr. Gupta?
Would you raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And give us your full names. Spell your last, please.
Jitin Gupta.
The woman to your right, is that your wife? Is she going to be speaking at all?
Yeah.
I just could.
All right, then just raise your right, if you could. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
How about the baby? Just in case. All right. The same applies. Tell us what's going on at your property and why you're here tonight.
Yeah. So now, I mean, that's a new property. It's like two-year-old.
Right. This is your survey that we're posting up?
Yeah. So as we have, like, you know, frontier side yard, and now baby has, like, you know, two-year-old now, so she wants, like, more space to go out and, like, you know, play around it. So that's where we decided to put a fence, and that's where we, like, you know, put application to put a six-feet solid fence. And the reason of putting that six feet is, like, you know, it provides the privacy and safety, because in that area, we have instances when the fox has come around it, even though, like, we have a naughty fox, which has stolen a couple of shoes, when we kept on our, on our porch. So that's a major reason, like, you know, we wanted, like, you know, a little bit higher or, like, longer fence, so that we can at least have a sort of protection.
This is the new builds over behind the Glenwood, behind Schulmeister?
Yes, that's correct.
A lot of foxes?
Yeah. I mean, we have, like, deer, fox, snake. So fox is, like, you know, more often we are seeing, because there are almost now 10 to 12 cases when fox has come to the porch, has stolen a couple of things, even from my house, like, you know, she has stolen, like, you know, my mother's shoes. Somehow, they always take a one shoe. I don't know why, but that's a prime, that's a major concern, like, you know, not going with, like, smaller fence.
Okay. You're kind of on a curve there, right?
Yeah. So I have a, I can share a couple of photos I have taken.
You would like to see them?
Yeah.
Mr. Burchell, would you take these? And then the board will go. Just give them to the lady right there?
Thank you.
And the board attorney will examine them to see if the board should look.
Huh? Are they all the same? These are the ones that are important, probably. Yeah, okay. All right. For the record, we'll mark them A1 through A4, okay?
You have other copies, right? Why don't you tell us what they, what they show? I don't have it in front of me, but I'm sure it's a picture of your house.
So, yeah, I mean, the thing is that the curve which I have is a very wide curve. It's not like, not a smaller curve.
You're talking about this?
Yeah, yeah. I'm talking about that. So if you see, it's like, you know, it's not going to be obstruction for any vehicle which is passing through it. And considering it's an inner road, so people come quite slowly. So I'm at least putting a six-feet fence, not, I'm hoping will not cause any sort of problem.
Now, this is not your house, right?
That's not my house. So this picture I brought in just to show that on the same road, my...
Oh, that A2, but it's, it's an example of what, that's A1.
Exactly. So this example, like, you know, this, on the same road, my backside neighbor has put six-feet solid fence.
Okay.
Facing the same road.
This is the front of your home?
That's the front of my home.
I will call it A3.
Mr. Gupta, why do you need it to be six feet?
As I said, like, as you see, as you can see, it's like, you know, running road, like, you know, many people come and pass through it. Putting a four-foot fence is like, you know, it's a privacy invasion completely. Like, you know, anybody can jump and come in also, to be honest. And second...
Needed for privacy and safety?
Privacy and safety. And like, you know, I have a two-year-old daughter, and we just want her, like, you know, to be in a protected environment, because it's just not only, like, you know, people are passing by, there are, like, so many unknown people also come. And second thing is, like, we have a quiet, like, animals also, a significant presence, I would say.
But it's going to extend beyond the front of your home, and that's what the issue really is. So let me pass this down to the other members. And is there anything else you want to tell me now? Because I'm going to ask the township professional to explain to us why.
Sure.
Mr. Hollahan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the applicant is seeking a C variance for a fence that is in, was definitionally a front yard. So I will direct everyone to the left screen over here. For the audience, it's to the right. So a front, a corner lot, we'll start with this, is defined as a lot that intersects at two streets. Being that Gazania Drive bends around this property here, there is no intersection of two streets, which makes this definitionally an interior lot. Because on corner lots, this is something that would be permitted, because a fence is permitted in the frontage of which the house does not face. So being that this is an interior lot, this area here along Gazania is definitionally all front yardage, which the requirement is no more than a four-foot-high fence, and has to be an open style, like a wrought iron picket. So the request for the variance is this frontage, or I'm sorry, this fence here, because it exceeds a four-foot height, and it is a solid fence. So it's a one-C variance here that's required.
And I think that's the house that backs up them. You saw, did you see A2?
I did not, no.
Let me see A2, please.
And effectively, because it's on the curve, does this house almost have two fronts?
It has one frontage. So the frontage...
Well, I'm just saying, it's a practical matter.
Practically, sure, but definitionally, no. It has one frontage.
Exactly.
I think that's the, excuse me. That's another, that's been described as the house behind him?
Correct. So A2, which is, I don't think it's shown on this one. Or A2, I believe, is Lot 15 here. So because Lot 15 faces to the left over here, this is a street frontage, but the ordinance allows a six-foot-high fence on the front of a interior, I'm sorry, the front of a corner lot in which the street, in which the house doesn't face. So because there is no, there's a intersection here, and this is a corner lot, and the house faces over here, they're permitted to have a six-foot fence here. So they are essentially be continuing that here. So if this was two separate streets here, this would be a corner lot, and this would be permitted under the ordinance.
Do you think that the six-foot would cause any site triangle problem as that curve goes around?
There are no site triangle easements, which would indicate there potentially being a site issue. There is also a, from the property line here, there's a four-foot utility and sidewalk easement. So I believe there is enough of a buffer, as long as the applicant agrees to keep it outside of this easement. It would be roughly about eight or 10 feet so from the sidewalk is where that fence would start.
You understand that, sir?
Yeah. It's going to be at 10 feet. I mean, we have measured.
Anything else?
Nope, nothing else.
See if the board members have any questions. I'll start down on my left. Done. Mr. Scogno?
So is the height of the fence, is it going to be the same with the neighbors?
Yes, yes.
It's going to be 10 feet in, you said?
10 feet away from the road, yes.
Okay.
It would be approximately about 10 feet from, so if you look here, this is the sidewalk here. From this point, which is the closest point of the sidewalk to this house, it would be, this is about a four-foot difference between the sidewalk to the property line. And then from the property line to this easement, you have another four feet. So approximately about eight to 10 feet is when the fence would start.
Steady do 10, right?
Wherever it's going to go, yeah, I guess.
So when I was, like, you know, applied with the company, they told me, like, it's always at 10 feet away from, like, roads. So that's amended. We are following. I'm acceptable to that.
Mrs. Andrews?
No, just as long as there's no problem with the side. That's what I'm concerned about.
All right. Counselor?
No, no questions.
All right. Anything else? Anything else you want to tell us? I think we've heard everything, but, and we've seen your exhibits, which were helpful. It was good, it was good that you brought them.
Thank you.
I do have to open up a public portion, but I'll, and I'll come back to you, and you'll have final word.
Sure.
This matter is twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. The physical location is thirty-two Gazania Drive. This is for a fence, seeking C variance. Anyone interested in commenting on this matter here in the courtroom, please raise your hand or stand. This will be the only time that we will have a public portion on this matter. No one has stood or raised their hands, I will close the public portion. Sir, final words?
Yeah, I mean, I added one more request along with this application for the porch. I'm not sure it's going to be here separately.
Separate issue?
Yeah.
Which, what is that issue?
So if you see that there's a one on the front side, so right now, if you see it, yeah, so that dot. So we don't have a full porch right now. So what's happening, if you... Let me share two more picture.
It's actually five feet into five feet.
Ms. Hollihan, will you wear this? Or could you aid us on this?
Briefly, I think we've had conversations in my office. My... He would, yes. Maureen, can you zoom in on the lot specifically?
This is A5 and A6.
Zoom in on the lot, Danny?
Yeah, on that like hashed out section. Chairman and Mr. Dasty, I don't believe the board, I don't believe they were noticed for it. But essentially, I think what the applicant is going to say is, he's looking to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, a front covered porch.
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
The front covered porch, which, Maureen, can you zoom in to this corner here?
Yes. He wants to extend it the whole house.
Correct, which would essentially, unless he cuts it behind this setback line, would incur a variance for an encroachment into the front yard. I don't believe it was made part of this application, so I don't think the board can consider it. I think the applicant would have to come back, but I will defer that to Mr. Dasty. But I believe that is what the question is, correct?
Yeah, that's the question.
I hold up A5. You can see, obviously, you have a copy of it.
Yes.
Because what you're suggesting is that this level, the top level of your stairs, would be extended across.
Yes.
They wouldn't cover the front windows, right?
No.
That will not, no.
And then the roof line would also be extended over.
Exactly, that's it.
Open.
Open, yes.
Not gonna close it up?
Not gonna close.
That would require what, Dan?
This section here would encroach into the front yard, so it would be a C variance for a front yard setback. I'm not sure what the measurement is, because I haven't formally reviewed it, but based on this drawing, it would encroach into the front yard.
I have added one drawing.
I'm sorry?
You have the drawing, okay.
Do you want to see this?
Yeah. So I worked with one of the architect just to get like, you know, how much setback, like, you know, after having a conversation with Daniel, like, you know, how much will be encroaching? It's a...
Let's see what, let's try and figure this out.
Sure, sure.
Because we haven't been noticed on it, I want to make sure we can legally...
So based on the plans, the front yard requirement is 20 feet. The proposed front covered porch is proposed 18.75 feet from the front yard property line.
I think we're gonna need a little bit more on that.
Sure.
While I'd like to help you out, we have to have more information, and legally, I think, right?
Mr. Gupta, let me, let me try to make it easy for you, if the board's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, by law, you will have to have given notice to your property owners about this, and you didn't. But rather than making a brand-new application, and a new fees, and new notices and all, why don't we consider holding this off until, not next week, the 18th?
Correct.
That'll give you enough time to give your neighbors 10 days' written notice about the front porch. And then you can come back and, I'm sorry.
We don't know, he'd have to, he'd have to file it.
Yeah, whatever he's gotta do over here. You might have to amend the, talk to Mr. Hollihan, you might have to amend the application, but it'll, it'll save you from needing to do it twice. Hey!
You understand?
No, no, I understand.
You wanna say it, sir?
Can I say something?
Don't.
Sorry, like...
Your application.
There's some miscommunication gap between me and Daniel, seems like happened. So when I sent the notification for fence, I added, actually, for the front porch also in the same notification. So it's a combination of both fence as well as front porch.
Is the, is the note, does the notice include the front?
And the, no.
And we don't, we don't have that?
No, the answer is it didn't.
It was in the notice, but Danny, remember we discussed it, and you had said he didn't need a variance for the front porch? That we were looking at?
His application, I'm looking at it, includes the front porch.
Oh. Then what's...
But we talked about it, and you had said he didn't need a variance, he was just gonna go for the deck, for the fence.
It definitely does. If it's uncovered, it doesn't, but if it's covered, it does.
Well...
Okay.
Because the roof extends across.
The roof extends with the house, but he's gonna need a variance.
Do you remember, was the notice for, do you see variances? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I would have to look.
The application, Dan, do I understand the application included it, but I guess not the notice of the...
Yeah, the application includes installing six-foot solid fence on the side boundary of the house, and number two, extending the roofed...
Did you notice, do you have a copy of the notice that went to the property owners? What did that ask?
I don't know, I don't have a copy of it.
Do we, you have a copy of the notice that you mailed out to everyone, that I could see?
I didn't bring that, but I have that. I can bring like...
Well, did it include, did you tell your neighbors that you were going to ask for this variance? You did ask for both.
Yes, I asked both. That's like, in the beginning, when I submitted the application, from day when the process started for both the...
You don't have that, right?
So do we have a drawing? Do we have?
I don't think we ever...
No, they never submitted a drawing, it was just the survey.
Well, it was applied for and presumably noticed to the property owners. So it may not be formally on the agenda, but he applied for it and he noticed. Perhaps, if you wish, if you wish to grant this approval, it would be conditioned upon providing that letter confirming it, and then go from there if you wish.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I think we could do that.
My honest opinion is the encroachment is probably under 10 square feet. It's, Maureen, can you zoom in as far as you can?
I add one point. The drawing which I gave, it's less than five square foot, actually.
Less than five square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. So the encroachment is this triangular portion that extends towards the street line, this triangular portion. So the options, if the applicant wanted to do this as a conforming application, they would have to cut essentially a foot or two off of it, and then it wouldn't line up with this existing building line. So I think it's a very, if you want my opinion, I think it's a de minimis ask. I think it's a very de minimis variance request. It's less than five square feet.
And he's applied for it and he noticed, so here we are.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't see a purpose to come back, other than we could vote on it tonight, conditional, that everything checks out?
I think conditionally on that the notice was correct.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, that's, that's up, that's up to you, Mr. Dasty, but I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, good.
It's okay with you, Mr. Dasty? Board members, any questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Did you go to the public?
Mrs. Andrews, any questions?
No, conditional.
All right. I did go to the public, but I'm gonna open it up one more time, because that wasn't part of what the testimony was earlier. So I'll reopen this matter to the public. This is now, as well as the fence, an extension of the roof line across the front porch. It's an open front porch, right? And so those windows that lead into whatever room will be clear and visible.
That's my neighbor's house, so exactly, it's going to look like that.
Oh, exactly like that.
Exactly.
Chairman, it will, it will be covered, but not closed in.
Not enclosed, I should say, not.
Correct, yep, yeah.
Okay. Anyone want to be heard in this matter? Please stand or raise your hand. No one has shown interest, I'll close the public portion. All right, now you're looking for the approval for both, right?
Yes, sir.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes, sure.
All right, and Dan, it's conditional that appropriate notifications were made, right?
You'll bring the letter in the next day or two to Mr. Hollihan, right?
Sure, sure, I'll submit tomorrow.
Probably next week, I don't think.
Oh, yeah.
We have a holiday weekend coming up.
Okay, next week's morning.
All right, we can, we can comfortably vote on that, and if it passes, then you'd have to file that information with the board.
Sure, sure, I will do.
So this would be, it would still be C, C variance for both of the issues. Someone comfortable moving that? And it would be conditional, of course, the second one would be conditional.
Chairman, I do want to add one more condition.
Yeah.
That if the board acts favorably, the fence does not encroach into that four-foot sidewalk and utility easement.
Right, and if he's put that on the record, that he would agree to that.
Yeah, fence is not going to come down, it will end there itself.
Gotcha, understood.
We don't need to do the fence separately, do we?
No, no, you can do both.
Do them both together, Cs together. Someone interested in moving?
I move it, Gomez moves it, with the conditions...
That's approval?
Yes.
Second, it's Stoner.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, on the conditions.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you for appearing here tonight with this lovely child.
Thank you so much for like, you know...
Good luck on your, on your build. Make sure you supply that information.
Absolutely.
The resolution would be available at, by next meeting.
Try to have it for next week.
We'll try.
We're close Monday, too, but I mean, we'll try Monday, very soon, yeah.
Our next meeting is next week. Normally, we wouldn't be staggered like this, but because of the, because of the holiday, it's just gonna move things around. So it may not be done by next meeting, which would be the later meeting in September, which is...
The 18th.
The 18th. We'll try for the fourth, but it is holiday weekend, and the law firm is probably closed, so, okay? So just keep in touch.
Sure.
Thank you for appearing tonight.
Thank you so much for like, you know, conceding the application at the last minute, and sorry for like confusion.
Thank Mr. Dasty for helping out on that one.
Danny, I need a copy of that. Yeah, I don't have it.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
While they're moving, I'm gonna read the next one in, which is not gonna be heard tonight. It's twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five Z. It's Mohamed Sarhan. It's also R5, block 1065, lot 277.11. The physical location is 277 Greenwood Drive in Keyport. That's, applicant proposes legitimizing a shed gazebo and above-ground pool that were installed by the previous owner. I understand that the applicant is asking this matter to be carried and carried to our next meeting, which would be next week, without further notice. If you're here on that matter, it's not gonna be heard this evening. Having said that, I'll read the next one in. Twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five Z, Harold Cunningham. This is the R7 zone, medium-high-density residential. This is block 26027, lot 62. Physical location is 25 Fourth Street, Old Bridge, for an above-ground pool requiring C variance. Applicant is proposing a 12-by-18 above-ground pool, three foot from the back fence. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Board attorney, a second?
Why would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same thing would apply, Mr. Cunningham. Tell us why, what?
We're looking to get a pool. The backyard's kind of small, it's got a 50 by 100 lot.
Let's get your survey.
Yep, yep, yep.
I have pictures also.
Give that to Ms. Porcelli, please.
Thank you.
So I have 20, it's roughly 24 feet from the back of the house to the fence.
We didn't get him sworn in.
And then from the house, I got an air-conditioning unit, which is probably within...
Hold on.
Five feet.
Swear, swear you in?
Yeah.
We did.
Yep.
We did?
Yeah, we did.
Oh.
Right?
I must have missed that. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Dasty's a fast worker. All right, continue, sir.
So we roughly got 24 feet or so. She wants to do 12 by 18, just because the kids are bigger. We're just sinking in the ground a little bit, less than two feet. But the air-conditioning unit also comes back off the back of the house, roughly within five feet. So we're just trying to bring the pool back to the fence a little bit, so we can have a little bit more room between the house and the pool, with some kind of patio or something. And, you know, just to get to the side, it'd be a little bit easier.
We're gonna mark this one...
A1 through, A1 through A3, yes.
Let's see. Yeah, I guess so. Okay. We've marked your three pictures, A1, 2, and 3. This is number one. I'm gonna ask you to just explain out loud to the board what this is.
That's the back of the house, that's the air conditioner. To the left of that is the house, and that's the air conditioner, and that's pretty much the room we have from that to the fence. It's kind, you know what I mean?
Your house would, the end of your house would be to the, to the left hand.
Correct, right there where the white is, yeah.
And the area shown is where you're talking about placing the pool?
Correct, kind of where that sand is, right there.
All right, let me pass this down.
It was an old patio.
All right. Why don't you tell me about this?
That's the other corner of the house, and that's like, that's the side of it, coming down the driveway side, and that's looking towards the right side of the house.
Once again, what you say, there's 24 feet?
24 feet, because it's roughly a 100-foot lot, you know, and it's about 75 feet of the house and the front yard, so...
Pass this down. That's A2, it's just from the opposite angle of the house.
Correct.
The opposite corner of the house.
Correct.
All right. This is A3. Explain that one.
That's just the, that's from the neighbors, like, in the corner, between the neighbors and to, to the walkway on the side of the house.
Total distance from the house to the fence, do you know what I'm saying?
24, 24 feet, I think.
And when you're done down there, I want Mrs. Andrews to see those as well. Get them all up to you at once.
Dan, what's the rear yard setback allowance requirement?
In the R5 zone, 25 feet. Oh, for a principal, for a pool?
Yeah.
Six feet. Six feet for a pool from all... Yes, above-ground and in-ground pools create the same six-foot requirement for the side in rear yards, and then three feet from the principal dwelling.
And this property is 50 by 100? It's only 100 feet deep in total?
Correct.
Is 100 feet deep until, yes, it's in the R7 zone, so it is an undersized parcel.
You said that it's, it requires six foot, and you're saying it's going to be at, the proposal's at three, right?
Correct, yes.
And moving it closer to the house would, what's it, 12 wide, so if you moved it three foot, four off the houses, that's going to be... 25 total?
If it went the other way, I was worried about my crazy son jumping off the roof into it.
Ah.
These kids.
If, if it were, just out of curiosity, if you turned the pool 90 degrees...
Go up.
So it would go up and down, wouldn't that change, wouldn't that bring him to the six foot? Because then you'd have 18 in length, 620, I guess that would probably be really close to the house.
So eventually, we would like the patio between the pool and the house, so like a gazebo or something, which I don't know what she wants, but I figured if we went the other way, the gazebo would be too close to the property line on either side that way. I don't know what the, what's the variance for that, six foot also?
For a gazebo?
Yeah.
Depends on the size of it. Up 250 square feet is three feet, and then above 150 square feet is 10 feet.
And if you were about, if you were to go, what's the, what's the next size down in the pool in width?
10.
No, no. 10 by 18 you could do?
10, yeah. Pretty small.
This much, what, this much less?
Is the variance for the, for the rear yard setback?
Correct, yes.
And he's proposing...
Three feet where six is required.
50, 5-0?
No, six.
Oh, six?
Six, yeah.
Let me get Mr. Hollihan on the record here, and then, then we'll get back.
50 feet is the width of the lot, yes.
Why don't you explain to us, Dan, what's going on?
Sure. So the applicant is requesting a variance for, a C variance for the rear yard setback of the pool. Pools require a six-foot setback from all property lines, both side yards and rear, where three feet is required. So it's one C variance that the applicant's requesting for the rear yard setback of the pool.
Right, he's good on the sides.
Good on the sides, yes.
Good on the sides, not good on the back.
Correct.
No, probably not.
I don't, I don't believe so.
You do the math, it's, if it turns it and you add 6 to 18, it's 24.
No, what I'm saying is he makes it 10 by 18.
Well, 10 brings him to 5.
I think he would be compliant because at 18 feet, he would need six feet off the rear yard property line and three feet off of the house. He would encroach on one of those setbacks if he rotated it vertically. He'd either be too close to the house or too close to the property line.
Where, where were you planning on putting the patio, patio, coming out of the home? Towards the rear of the home.
That all, that's an old walkway that went to like an, an old deck that we bought the house with.
Uh huh.
So that, that's kind of what she wants to do, but she doesn't want to do a deck. She's not really sure what she wants to do. cement or pavers and something on it, that's just, and I was, you know, just trying to get more room off the, off the air conditioner, too, you know what I mean, just...
Mr. Cunningham, where would the pool equipment go? The heater or pump?
What, where the air, air conditioning, AC is, in line with that, but closer to the pool, like, maybe right behind the pool a little bit?
About here?
Well, I can come, I could go there, or come back up past the pool, closer to the back, to the neighbor.
Okay.
On the side with the air conditioner, you know what I mean?
Okay.
The mechanicals for the pool?
Yeah.
That would be up? You're talking about up near the air conditioning unit?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there'd be at least three feet from the property lines, because that's what the requirement is. Based on his testimony, it appears it would be compliant.
So he's only here because he's three foot short on the, on the rear yard, right?
Correct, yeah, and I think his testimony is if he moved it closer to the home to comply with that six-foot setback, it's a little bit closer than he would like to be to that air-conditioning condenser, which I think if he were to move that, would probably be pretty costly.
I looked into it, yeah.
Let me see if anybody in the public has a comment on this. 26-25, 2025Z, 25 Fourth Street, above-ground pool. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you, you were asking questions while we were going on. I'll hold the public portion, I'll start on the left, go ahead.
Are you planning to put this in the ground?
Above ground.
Yeah, it's above, it's above ground, but are you planning to put it with...
Just sink it in a little bit, like, less than two feet, because I know you can't go more than two feet.
So you are going to place it in the ground, two feet, yeah. It's, although it's above ground, you are going to place it in ground?
Right.
Yeah. And the other thing I want to ask you is, where are you going to backwash the water?
I can, well, I can, I can backwash it to the street.
Because you've got neighbors all around you.
Correct, I can backwash it to the street.
You're going to run a hose all the way out to the street?
Either that, or the neighbor next to me, he has, he has a garage that's, right next to my property, that runs along the neighbor's property, and he allows me to run a hose between his fence and that garage, because it's only like six or eight inches.
And the water table in your area, when you start to...
We have sand, we don't have any issues with water.
Water, okay, thank you.
I have a question for you, Dan, what if this pool collapses, I mean, with his neighbors being...
Say that again?
If the pool collapses, it's above ground, still a chance the sides collapse. I mean, that's a lot of water hitting his neighbor's yard.
I don't know if the pool being three foot further away from the fence, I mean, I'm sure there's a couple hundred, if not thousand gallon pool, I don't know if three foot's going to make a difference. I don't know.
No.
Mrs. Andrews, anything?
She's 15, and my daughter's 13.
No, I, I'm only concerned with kids in the teenage years. I know my mother had it before, oh, I'm sorry.
We had a, we had an above-ground pool, and my brother's friends would come, and instead of going on the ladder, they would jump over and many times hit it and pushed the side of the pool in because they were big teen, 16, 17-year-olds. That's probably the reason we're asking about that, because it is so close to, to your neighbors. That's just a concern of mine, that's why I want to know how old. You know, eight and 10-year-olds don't do that.
Yeah.
But 15 and 16-year-olds do.
Yeah, I do want to add, I think this, now, I don't know this for sure, but I think the setback requirement for a pool is really geared towards safety issues, right? So... The point is to have, obviously, every pool has to have a barrier that's not climbable and at least four foot high, but if someone were to climb it, the object of that setback is so that they can't climb that barrier and then fall directly into the pool. So I think that's really what that setback requirement is, is geared toward, more safety issues.
Thank you. All right, any final comments?
Nope.
Now we'll go to the public portion. Nobody else has any questions, right? 25 Fourth Street, for an above-ground pool, anyone want to be heard in this matter, please raise your hand or stand. No one has, I'll close the public portions. I'll give you the final words, and then I'll ask you if you want to take a vote. Any final words?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. Board members, any questions for the applicant before we call for a vote?
No.
Seeing none, is someone interested in moving this for approval? This would be a C variance for three foot, three foot setback from the back of the house for the pool. I'll move it, is there a second?
I'll second it, Stoner.
Moved in second, roll call please.
Mrs. Andrews?
I'm giving a yes, but I really hope that you tell your children to be extremely careful with their friends.
All right, they, I hope so, I will.
No, because I have concerns.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, I'm sure you'll keep an eye on the teenagers, that they don't wreck the place, right?
It's an expensive pool, so, yes.
And you'll stay out of trouble with your wife, because you came home with an approval. Make sure you file a proper permits and make sure you touch base with Mr. Hollihan.
Thank you.
All right, again, the, the resolution may or may not be done by next Thursday, it might be the 18th. All right?
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. We're going to hold on to these as part of the application, all right? Okay, final application for the evening, 28-2025Z, Enzo Denton, I hope I'm saying that right. This is the R12 zone, medium-density residential. This is block 17009, lot 8. Physical location is 19 Schindler Drive in Old Bridge. Six-foot vinyl fence and driveway. The applicant proposes to legitimize a driveway and a six-foot vinyl fence. Driveway was installed 1, 1 point, 1 foot, 0.3 from the side yard property where 5-foot minimum is required. The six-foot, six-foot vinyl fence was installed in the front yard where 4-foot maximum height open fence is permitted. Fence was installed atop a 4-foot retaining wall, creating a 10-foot wall where only 6-foot maximum is permitted. Mr. Denton, did I say it right?
In 10 is fine, Denton. It's fine, I know who you're speaking to.
The board, the board attorney will swear you in, sir.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please take a seat, sir. You've had the advantage of seeing others before you, so go at your own pace.
Okay, you know, most of this was done while I was kind of away. My father gave it as a gift, and I took on this on my shoulders and everything, and my father's kind of old school, he's kind of from the South America, so he was just trying to be nice and do something nice to the house and everything while I was away, and so I had to basically later come in and actually start doing all the permits and everything and do everything correctly, and now I'm here asking, and to at least, it's a beautiful driveway, it's beautiful, everything that was actually done and everything, but now I have to do the proper procedures and speak to you all, and hopefully get to keep my property, which is the very last house in the end unit in a, in a Foxborough, on the cul-de-sac, so I pretty much have just one neighbor right next to me, so.
You're down at the end, you'd be, as you go towards the bulb, you'd be the last house on the list.
Last, last house, very last house.
You say your father-in-law did this, or your father did it?
My father.
Was it his home previously?
No, 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 he has his own home, but he, he just thinks that, you know, we could do things, you know, put pavers in and all kinds of stuff, and make things nicer and everything, and...
Oh, I see. Oh, you're saying he's old school and he didn't...
Yeah, he's, 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 you know...
So he didn't really do it with your approval?
No, no, but it was nice of him to do something like this, but he was already knee-deep in, and I had to fix it all up.
How long ago was it done? How long ago was it done, sir?
Oh, it was done probably about three years ago.
How many?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
If you don't have anything to add at this present moment, you don't have any exhibits or anything, do you?
Sadly, no, I would have loved to, I mean, I did send in, in an email and everything, all the pictures and everything. I did not realize that the best way to do it is to come up with some nice pictures and all that stuff.
Well, they say pictures, pictures speak a thousand...
Speak a thousand, and I, I'm in, I'm in trucking and in logistics, and I do the same thing when someone asks me for a quote on something, and it always helps out. I have some on my phone, but I don't know if that's worth something.
Well, we can't, we can't take them on the phone. Let's see what Mr. Hollihan has to say, all right? Aide us in the decision-making.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the applicant is here tonight, he's requesting actually one C variance and one design waiver. The design waiver for the driveway, where the driveway was installed 1.3 feet from the side yard property line where 5 feet is required, and also fence height. So definitionally, a fence height is measured from outside grade, so when it is put on top of a wall, like a retaining wall, the fence height is measured from the bottom of that wall to the top of the fence, which then creates, you know, when you have a six-foot fence on top of a four-foot wall, it's a 10-foot high fence or wall. So in the front yard, similar to the first application we heard tonight, where you kind of have that frontage all along the roadway, only a four-foot tall open fence is permitted in the section that is highlighted orange, but yellow is where the, the fence is. So both the orange and the, and the yellow section. So one design waiver for the driveway setback, and then one variance for the fence height is what's requested.
Have you been to the property?
I have not, but I'm glad the applicant is here, because we've been trying to get this done for three years, so I'm glad he's finally here in front of you guys.
He's been very helpful, by the way. He's been amazing. It's, I'm the one that travels a lot.
Denton, did you supply this letter from the homeowners' association?
Yes.
It's telling, I mean, could I read it into the record?
Please.
This is from the Foxborough Village Homeowners Association, they give their address, their office address. It's Attention Old Bridge Zoning Board, Zoning Board of Adjustments, reference 19 Schindler Drive North, with the last name is, with Denton. To whom it may concern, this letter will address the variance application of the retaining wall with fence structure at 19 Schindler Drive North. The association has Article 10 of the restrictive, restrictive covenants, which indicates a unit owner must conform to any setback lines established by the original subdivision. The covenant does not give the owner the discretion to seek a variance, I'm sorry, does give the, does, does, does give the unit owner the discretion to seek a variance. So the association would defer to the township on any variance application. There are no prohibitions in the governing documents as to placing a retaining wall with a fence structure on the property line of a single family unit, as long as it conforms to the township ordinance and construction code. And that was signed by the HOA board president, and I don't see the reason to put her name on the record, but...
We're going to mark that as A1, Mr. Denton.
Sure, thank you.
Comments on that, sir?
Yeah, the, the reason for the, for the retaining wall and everything is because we have now, it was very sloped, and obviously, that's why the wall was built, and it's, it's gathered to be such a beautiful area to, to be, to picnic with the family and everything, to be outside viable. We gained about 3,000 usable space to, to enjoy with the family, and have, you know, anyone come over and things like that. So that was the reason why the thought was, the thought was always there, and then it just happened when he did it, and I said, no, I have to do everything the correct way, and I've been trying to, you know, do the, all those, those stuff, and they, both Maureen and, Maureen and everyone has been very helpful on just trying to do it correct, you know, do it the right way.
I understand, and I appreciate your candidness. Mr. Hollihan, would you point out, you have the marker, would you point out where that wall is?
It's the orange. I tried to, I tried to color-code them, so you guys have a better idea, at least to give you a visual.
Yeah, so the orange, if you look to your left, Chairman and, and board members, the orange section here is the wall, and then the yellow section here is the fence, and I believe the, the fence is installed on the wall, except for this kind of portion here. So just so the board is aware, back in 2022, our office had kind of received a complaint about the construction of this. It does slope pretty drastically from about this point down to the roadway. There was a bunch of kind of fill, and the, and the property was raised up, and then that retaining wall was installed. So that's for the purpose of the retaining wall, is because there was a substantial amount of fill that was brought in here to raise this property up.
So if you're in your home on the first floor, can you see over that fence?
I don't have a, a window shooting straight out there, but yes, you could just, yeah, we're in a backyard, and we could see right across and everything, so...
So what is the purpose of the extra fence on top of the retaining wall? Privacy?
Privacy and safety, yeah.
Is it a continuous where someone couldn't walk through any piece of the property? Is, is, in other words, it's where, where it starts and it looks like it goes up in it?
It turns, well, the cul-de-sac, obviously, is that bubble.
Yep.
Right, you know, and my land is technically part of the, the street. So, you know, as we, we just followed the curve and everything, and he, you know, we, we put the wall up just to make it more flat and everything, and it makes, looks nicer.
The retaining wall?
Yeah.
No, that I understand, but it's the fence part I'm talking about, on top of the retaining wall.
Okay, well, it just, I mean, there's also, you know, it looks better on structure and everything, it's beautiful to make it, I understand, we had a conversation about it, and I was just seeing what I can do about trying to keep it on there and everything, it's...
See if the board members have comments.
Sure, well, I guess.
Start down on my left, Ms. Gomez.
I mean, I'm the last house.
What's behind you, by the way?
Woods, Avalon, Avalon, the big whatever, but they're not building anything back there, I've spoken to them.
Do you know how far behind it, it's, is that considered any...
Oh, green acres, yes.
Green acres at all?
Yeah.
So there's a portion?
I think like two and a half acres of their, everything behind, I'm not sure.
Would you know?
But I know that when I spoke to somebody from there, they said, nothing can ever be built back here, they just wanted their, their bond back and everything when they, when they spoke to me.
I want to make sure that's so because sometimes people are told that and it isn't, but Mr. Hollihan, do you know?
I can't confirm, but I believe that it is part of the Avalon development, just kind of protected wetlands that weren't developed and don't have plans to be developed. That's my understanding of that parcel back there.
I'm sorry. Also, the deer and stuff, we've had, because we have, we had a smaller fence before, the deer have jumped over everything, so that was one of the main reasons why we were trying to build a guy.
Let me see, I apologize to you, Ms. Gomez, because I interrupted you, go right ahead.
What?
I apologize, I asked if you had anything to say and then I interrupted.
I just have one question. When you put that retaining wall up and you have the fence on.
Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry. It's on?
Yep.
Just lean in.
Okay. When you put that retaining wall up and then you put the fence on top of it, can you take and put that fence behind the retaining wall so it meets the required thing?
It is behind, it is not on top of the wall.
So then why is it 10 feet high?
It's, it's because the wall is four and the ten, the fence is six.
Okay.
It's not that the fence is 10, it's from, am I right or wrong? Because the floor, four and six equals 10, it's not that the fence is 10, understand?
But the total height is 10.
Correct.
So you would need to pull the fence back to make it six legally, right?
I would have to take it down, pretty much, I'd only have to put, I could only put a two-foot offense.
Or put it right behind it.
I did put it right behind it.
Okay.
I'm confused too.
Is the fence physically on the retaining?
No, it's not.
I can explain.
It's literally, almost, I'm not going to lie.
I can explain if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
Some people put it inside of it.
So at some point, this retaining wall and fence are relatively within a couple of inches of each other. When we measure height, we go, again, like I said, from outside grade. The policy of the zoning office historically has been unless there is a difference of a minimum of 12 inches between the wall and the fence, so if this fence is within 12 inches of the wall, we will use the wall as a starting point of outside grade. So that is not true for all points in difference between the fence and the wall. So at the highest point, based on our policy and kind of our definition, at some points it is 10. Now, there are some points over here towards the bulb with the cul-de-sac where there's at least a foot difference, and I can say this is a six-foot fence here, but nonetheless, the requirement is four feet. So in lieu of kind of, you know.
I understand the definitions, but if I'm looking at it from the street, is it 10 feet high or is it the six?
It appears, it appears 10 feet high because you will see wall and then you will see fence above it.
I do have about three feet from the curve and then the wall starts also, it looks like, but I have a couple bushes right there, not like right on the curve. I'm sorry for not bringing in pictures, I think you guys would have been much easier to visualize it. I apologize.
If the retaining wasn't, the retaining wall wasn't there?
It would be a six-foot fence.
Six-foot fence.
Correct. Or if at all points that fence was moved at least a foot off the wall at all points, I would define the outside grade as what's outside the fence, not what's outside the wall. So I wouldn't include the height of the wall.
But in essence, it's really, what he's looking for is approval for the six-foot fence.
Correct, but.
Physically is what it is, but by definition it's different.
Correct, yes.
That's what I wanted to say.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that if I pushed it back 12 inches?
I don't think that matters, right?
It wouldn't matter, you'd still need a variance because.
Okay.
Maximum height of a fence is four feet.
No, no, I remember you telling me that, but I was just curious, because now I heard that if I moved it back a little bit, so I'm asking that if I can leave it, in other words.
And if it was moved back a little bit, it wouldn't be 10 feet, then it would be six feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, there's, there's no requirement, our ordinance, that governs the height of a wall that is meant to retain soil, only really landscape also.
But the retaining wall and fill that was put there was never legitimized either.
Correct.
Now.
Correct. They're definitionally, they both meet the definition of a wall, and walls are only permitted, fences and walls is what the definition in the ordinance says, are only permitted up to four feet in a front yard. So although this fence is six feet, the wall is also four feet, and because of the proximity of the fence to the wall, the outside grade would be the bottom of the wall, which would make it a 10-foot-high structure, or a 10-foot-high wall.
All right. This is, well, the driveway is a separate issue and that's, that's a waiver.
Correct, yes.
It's supposed to be five foot, but you're at 1.3, does that affect your neighbor at all?
I put Belgium blocks, so they're sloped and everything. To be honest, the original survey and the original driveway was already about a foot off at the, at the top. I just followed that line straight down and, you know, I didn't realize it was actually five feet, whatever, but I do have a lot of neighbors that are just like right up against each other, I'm sure they probably went through variances as well and everything, so.
Do you have a problem with your neighbor with, with the proximity?
No, there's like 10 of them, they're all over Foxborough, I was like, wow, I have all kinds of pictures, but I'm not, it's not about that. I already talked to my neighbor, he's like, no, because, and even he said, because of the slope of the Belgium, so when it rains, it just trickles down and just comes right off, so it's never going to be.
Your driveway.
Right, my driveway is going to trickle right down, never going to.
Not onto his problem. That's important.
Yes, that's one of the things that I learned also from someone else, he's, you're very lucky you did that, I'm like, thank you, did something right.
If there were an approval, Mr. Dasty. This is confusing, it's, it would be a C variance, but it's really only for the fence.
Yes.
Which should be, which would be a maximum of four, but it would be at eight foot because of the retaining wall, but it.
10 feet.
No, because it's four and four, the retaining wall's four, and if you had a four-foot fence, we'd be here at eight, but now we're talking about 10 because it's a six-foot fence. So really, the permission would, the permission would be that the six-foot fence remain.
Yes, correct.
Well, that's pretty much what it comes down to, whether you, whether you feel you should maintain the six-foot fence, that I guess we just awarded to a previous applicant to put a six-foot fence on their property in violation, the same, basically the same issue, but this, I understand the proximity to the wall and then because of the measurements, but that doesn't, to me, that doesn't really change the physical nature of what it is.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, that's just the way I see it, I mean, I understand the rules and that's the ordinance, I mean, I can't.
No, no.
I can't defer from that, but I could vote to approve, to, I could vote in favor of an application, but I'm only one vote, so I don't know how that goes.
Chairman, just to kind of further explain, so the reason the definitions are kind of wrote that way is when you're looking at it from the outside, so if you're driving, you're making a U-turn in this bulb with a cul-de-sac, you're going to see a 10-foot-high structure, you'll see four feet of wall and you'll see six feet of fence. So that's kind of how we get to that definition of how we determine the height.
I understand. Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
If he moved the fence 12.
The microphone closer to you, please.
I'm sorry.
Lower.
If he moved the fence 12 inches, then it's, it's not 10 feet anymore.
Correct, then the fence would be a six-foot-high fence in a front yard where four feet is required. So it'd still be a variance, but for a six-foot fence rather than.
We still need a variance for the retaining wall, which without, we don't need a variance, okay?
No.
Then we just need a variance for a six-foot fence.
Right.
But it's only a six-foot fence if he moves it 12 inches?
Correct.
Well, physically, it's always going to be a six-foot fence.
Yes.
It doesn't change.
My mind is still progressing.
But, yeah.
I don't agree with the definitions.
I understand, I have the same confusion.
I was terrible in geometry, but now I'm bad in math.
Yeah, I think the main concern is obviously visibility when you have that big of a structure on a road, you know, similar to the first application we heard. Obviously, this situation's a little bit differently because he is at the end of a cul-de-sac, so, you know, any traffic that's looking at that wall or fence is turn-around traffic in a cul-de-sac, so.
Your neighbor is, if you looked at the bulb as you come in, you're at about nine and 10 o'clock, on the clock, you know, if you looked at.
Yeah, exactly.
And then your other neighbor would be like 1 o'clock, on the, on the clock.
Yep, that's, that's about right.
So obviously, there's not a lot of traffic in your street, I wouldn't think.
No, the people will walk, walkers.
I was saying, you don't get a lot of turnarounds, I wouldn't think.
No, some people don't realize it's a dead end sometimes, because our dead end sign is a little covered and everything, it's old.
All right, since this has been built, has there been any traffic accidents down at the end of that cul-de-sac because of your wall?
Thank the Lord, no, no.
All right, thank you.
No, Ms. Andrews has a question.
Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
Does anyone else have a structure this high in the hope of Foxwood Development?
So I'm a walker too, and I walk all over the, all over the place. There's certain things on the other side of the, I live on the north side of Foxborough, I didn't even know I was in Foxborough when I bought the house, I literally got a piece of paper the day of, and say, oh, by the way, here's your HOA, I'm like, I'm like, I just did the mortgage, I did everything, I'm signing everything, and now you tell me I'm, and I was like, okay, and I signed away. So when I, on the other side, the same beautiful houses, you know, there's like six different styles of town, townhomes, houses, and there's a couple, but I don't, I'm not going to lie, but nobody is at that dead end spot too, you know what I mean? I'm not going to, it's, it's just that it's, I'm all the way at the end, there's no, like, there's not even a house between me and the 2 o'clock, 1 o'clock one, you know, there's nothing there. And fortunate enough, I do get along with them very, very well, everybody around us, so, no, and then there has, it's, I mean, we do have three years on this, no, they have, thank the Lord, nobody's ever.
So in other words, your property does not stand out amongst a group of homes?
No.
Okay.
No, especially since I'm at the end. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
And that space between you and the 2 o'clock, it's not buildable or is it just wood?
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry, that space between you and the 2 o'clock property, is that just an open space or is that just not buildable property?
It's not going to be built, and according, when I bought the house, I was also told by the person, the, the person who sold me the house, no, no, there's paperwork and everything, and he said, there's never going to be.
I'm just saying, in future reference, if someone else builds there, would that?
Yes, I agree, I agree with you, no.
Who owns that, is that part of the association's property?
That's considered, to be honest with you, since it's a cul-de-sac, there's the avenue of it being, just not going to, according to Avalon, I mean, and everyone, because they own that area, whatever. I would just, again, yes, you're right, some people could tell you whatever, but it all depends on what is.
Right, and when were those homes built, do you know?
1982.
Okay.
81, 82.
Mr. Scogno's next.
Oh, thank you very much. Are you here to legitimize, right, but was it brought to your attention to come to us? Why, why are you coming to us?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Who did that, the HOA?
No, no, it was a Mr. from, from.
I don't think it's relevant that.
I don't think we ought to worry about on the record who was complaining.
Well, you indicated that other neighbors have the driveway butted up.
Yeah, but that's like two streets down, that's got nothing to do with it.
So it wasn't the HOA that came to you?
No, no, not at all.
Has the HOA mentioned the driveway? Mr.?
The HOA doesn't, I'm sorry.
Has no problem with the driveway?
The HOA doesn't mention any specific non-conformity, it just says that they don't take a stand on variances, period, that's what it says. It doesn't talk specifically about the fence or the driveway.
Yes, but then they put the blame on us if we approve it, if you read further onto it.
I don't know, I just, they're not taking a position and they say if you go and seek a variance, they don't stand opposed to it. You have one of these, right? It's A1, Mr. Scogno?
Yes, I have that, yes.
Anybody else coming down the line? And, Mrs. Andrews, anything?
Nope.
All right, I have to go to a public portion.
Sure.
This is a matter 28 dish 2025Z, the physical location is 19 Schindler Drive, this is to legitimize a six-foot vinyl fence installed in the front yard where four-foot height open fence is permitted. There's also 1.3-foot driveway waiver, which is being sought where five-foot minimum is required. If anyone is interested, and there's only two other people here in the room, if you're interested in this matter, please raise your hands. They are not, there's no one else in the room except the board and TV person, so I'm going to close the public portion, you have the final words, and then I'm going to ask if you want me to take a vote.
No, thank you for your time, and that's it, appreciate it.
I see your predicament, I think your father tried to do something good and I, personally, I never, I didn't know the mathematics behind that.
Neither did I.
And I'm sure, I'm sure you didn't, and 10-foot to me sounds confusing, but it's, in my mind, this comes down to the approval of a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's uncommon, and I think we did it in the last application, so. I, I, I see because of where you are, I don't think there's any other outside source that's, that's being harmed by this. I don't think your neighbors are harmed, they've all been notified, Ms. Burchelli?
Yes.
And no one has come in here to speak for or against, so I guess they're mute on that, and it sounds like the association doesn't care, so. I don't know if you want me to take, take a vote.
Sure.
If you want me to call for a vote.
Things have been three years, so I think it's a.
Okay, this would require the C variance, Mr. Dasty, right for.
Yes, the C variance and the design waiver, each of which is just the majority vote of the six of you.
Correct. And Chairman, can I just add one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Should the board act favorably and if the applicant would agree to the condition that, should the board act favorably, he obtains the construction permits for the wall and the zoning permits for the fence and the driveway that have been done without permits?
I would certainly hope you would.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah, it was just the next step and everything, they told me to.
Right.
Don't, don't proceed this.
All that back, back, all of those back issues have to be taken care of, I would say, for the resolution.
Yeah, I have the engineer paperwork and everything, everything's ready to be put in, to place.
Well, I just, Mr. Hollihan wants it on the record, and now you're on the record as agreeing.
Yes.
Okay, that's good, right?
Got it.
Okay, having said that, we're going to call for a vote, the C variance and then the waiver.
Yes.
Hold them separately. C variance for the fence, anybody in favor of approving it?
I approve it, Mrs. Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
Chevalier.
Okay. Roll call as to the C for the six-foot fence, where four is the max.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, on the approval because it's on a cul-de-sac and with the conditions that Mr. Hollihan said.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
I feel comfortable saying yes, I understand it's a little convoluted, but to me, it still comes down to a six-foot fence. Design waiver for the driveway, someone want to move that? I will, is there a second?
A second, Stoner.
Roll call, please, as to the design waiver.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, I see no harm to anyone in the immediate area, and as, once again, I repeat, no one has come forward to complain about this matter. Please satisfy all the requirements of the township, sir, thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you all very much, have a wonderful night.
Good night, good night, sir. Board members, the only other order of business, did we cover, oh, the special meeting? Special meeting was requested, I don't know, you have a, got a letter, but this is requested for a Monday, a, a meeting prior to the October meeting that this is scheduled for, and they gave three dates, the 22nd, which is a Monday, the 23rd, which is a Tuesday, but that's a religious holiday, that's Rosh Hashanah, that would be out, and Friday, the 26th. I personally don't see a reason why we should have this. I asked Mr. Dasty the legality, and we have the right to deny this.
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, and you're going to start going down a slippery slope if